Welcome to the Barrington Candidate Forum for Town Council and later for School Committee. My name is Naomi Kennedy and I am with the League of Women Voters of Rhode Island. The League of Women Voters is a grassroots education and advocacy organization. We conduct voter registration drives and candidate forums or debates like this one. We also study issues, reach consensus positions on those issues, and then lobby to promote those positions. The League is nonpartisan. We never endorse any candidate or party. We welcome your members, both men and women. Our sponsors for this evening are the League of Women Voters of Rhode Island and the East Bay Media Group, which publishes local newspapers throughout the East Bay. The Barrington Times is one such paper. Our moderator for tonight's forums is Scott Pickering, General Manager of the East Bay Media Group. Tonight, we will have two forums. The first will involve the candidates for Town Council. Kathleen Barard, Raymond Clark, Braxton Medlin, and Gerard Jared, excuse me, Ryan. The second forum will be for those running for School Committee. William Bell, Thomas Peck, Margaret Reed, and Rudy Stever. In each forum, the moderator will be selecting eight questions from those submitted by the public. The order for speaking has been pre-selected. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer all questions asked. The order of speaking will rotate for each question. Each candidate will have one minute for an introductory opening statement, for an answer to each question, and for a closing statement. If additional time is desired, he or she may use one of the six wildcard times of 30 seconds each to either elaborate on their answers or to lengthen their opening or closing statements. The timing of the forum will be done by our two timers, Trish Sylvester and Joanne DeBolt. When the speaker has only 15 seconds left of his or her time, timers will hold a yellow sign. When time is up, a red sign is raised. When the speaker sees the red sign, he or she can finish the sentence. But if another sentence is started, a wild card will be charged. Susan Esters will keep track of how many wild cards have been used by each candidate. The forum is being viewed in real time by our Zoom audience. It is also being recorded and may be seen up to Election Day. I go into the League's website, L W B R I dot com dot org. I will now turn over the forum to our moderators, Scott Pickering.
Thank you, Naomi. Okay, just a little more rambling for me before we get started. As I like to, for the audience that is not seeing this before, we're in a room at the Barrington Library using a piece of equipment called the Owl. It's a little like a camera in the middle of the room, and anytime someone is speaking, it finds the voice and picks them up and puts them on screen. You may occasionally see like a one-second delay if someone starts talking before the camera finds them, but it throughout the night will be switching panels between speakers as we go. So that's where we are. That's what we're doing. Very familiar format of opening statements, closing statements, and question and answer. We already determined the order. We're going to start with opening statements with Kate Barard, and can we take it away?
Great, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here again. I'm glad this is my second time around, although still nerve-wracking to talk to you in a little camera, but I'm grateful for the opportunity and thank you, Scott, for the questions. I wish this was in person, but it's not. That's okay. I'm still happy to share with you why I am hoping to earn your vote for Town Council. I am dedicated to collaboration with the current members of the council and other members of our community. I firmly believe that we have personal resources in town that can help preserve our resources. I'm committed to the infrastructure, improving and expanding of that for both our fields, our walkability, our driving, and taking that out of such a vulnerable zone for sea level rise. I'm excited to be here tonight and answer the questions that you have submitted, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Howard Braxton Medlin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Braxton Howard Medlin, and I am a resident of Barrington. I live here with my fiance and our twin boys, and I'm really, really excited to be here with the League of Women Voters of Rhode Island, along with Scott and, or excuse me, Ray and Jared and Scott and Kate. Thank you so much. I am excited about the chance to work with the current Town Council members. I have served as the Chair of the DEI Committee for the Town of Barrington for the last year, and the growth that I've seen in Barrington has been absolutely amazing. I'm not a native Rhode Islander, which I know will strike some questions, but my fiance was born and raised here. He went to May. He went to Barrington Middle School, and he also is a 1993 graduate of Barrington High School. And he has shown me a lot about the great things of this town and where he grew up and what he would like to see for our twin boys. I'm super focused on walkability here in town. We're runners, and we love running on Soames. We love running on New Meadow. And I would love to see the Complete Streets Initiative come to fruition, as well as some of our climate resilience plans that we have going forward, because I would like to know that my boys will have a place to come back to whenever they, you know, are ready to start a family. Thank you so much, and I look forward to answering your questions this evening.
Thank you. I'm very sorry about that. I was looking at a sign. Didn't have your full name on it. I apologize, Braxton. All right, next up is Ray Clark.
Hi, I'm Ray Clark, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and Scott for hosting us tonight, and thank the other candidates for participating as well. I'm running for Town Council because I have deep roots here, and I care a lot for the town. I grew up here, and my wife and I attended Barrington schools, as did my parents and both my kids. My family goes back in town five generations. Over the past couple of years, I've become concerned that the current Town Council's been become very kind of one-sided. All five current members are affiliated with the Democrat Party, and it seems to me that they tend to vote in lockstep on many of the key issues, and that a lot of these issues are being unanimously voted upon without much opportunity for input from the community. I want to try to bring some balance back to the Town Council and hopefully bring an alternative view on some key issues. I also want to make sure that the council is communicating adequately with the public so that in the future, none of us is caught by surprise by a vote that may seriously impact us and our daily lives. I thank you again for having me here.
Thank you. And finally, Jared Ryan.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, and thank you to the Town of Barrington. My name is Jared Ryan. I grew up in West Barrington by Haynes Park. I moved back to Barrington seven years ago with my wife and two sons for the great school system here. My father lives here. My sister and niece live here. My sister-in-laws live here. Their families live here. I graduated from South Bay Virginia University. I love research and analysis with an administration of justice, education, and a blue-collar work ethic. I have been able to be a leader in major transitions and growth for a few different companies along the way. I have a passion for sports and know the great importance of town athletics and the positive effects that it has on our youth and our community at large. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that concludes the opening statements. We're going to move to a question and answer period. Every candidate is going to have a chance to answer the same question. We're going to start in the same sequence we just did, so Kate, Ms. Barard, will be getting the first question. Some of these questions are a little long. I, I, I don't know, I was feeling creative today is going through them, so there's a little bit of a setup to the questions. So just be patient timers. Not all of them, but most of them. All right, question one to Ms. Barard. Where should Barrington focus its efforts to improve public infrastructure in the next five years? Feel free to go in any direction with this topic, such as streets, sidewalks, rights of way, boating facilities, buildings, green spaces, recreational facilities, or something else.
Thank you for that question. This is where I'm primarily focused. I have been on the planning board for the past two years. I'm also a real estate attorney for the past decade. That's really where my brain has spent most of its time. I think our infrastructure, the biggest need is connectivity through sidewalks and concurrent travel, and namely those spaces that are going to eventually be affected by climate change and sea level rise. It is very true that the studies that came out see much of 114 underwater, and we need to actively plan now to make those efforts to improve. And for me, that is also, I know this is a school issue, but I think about the high school and its location relative to the floodplain. I think about what that forward planning looks like, our particular areas in town that are higher ground, if we can use those for our critical structures. I see improvement to our town fields as well as a big issue. I'm not a fan of artificial turf, but in the town I grew up in, we did have a dedicated field crew that took the time to make that their particular mission to manage. I see opportunity for growth there and continued improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Medlin, same question.
Regarding the improvement of public infrastructure, I have really enjoyed reading the Complete Streets Plan, which Teresa Green, our town planner, has been really good about presenting at our most recent Town Council meetings. Like I said previously, my fiance and myself are runners. Our boys play baseball, and we would just like to see our streets and our sidewalks and the roads be safe for the kids who walk back and forth to all of our neighborhood schools. And I believe that if we can improve the streets, if we can improve our sidewalks, if we improve connectivity, like my colleague Ms. Barard said, I think it would really go, really go far in helping our town move forward. Additionally, I know that very recently, there was money that was given to Barrington to finish the bike path. The East Bay Bike Path connects, I believe, Bristol, Rhode Island, all the way up to Providence, and I would love to see the bike paths completed and the bridges refinished so that that can be a safe, effective way for people to not only travel, to get back and work, to possibly work, but also for recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Yeah, I too, you know, I believe that the Complete Streets program, most of it I'm in agreement with, and there are some elements that I'd like to learn a little bit more about specifically, that some of the bike lane type of things. I have a little bit of concern, but in general, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good start, and I also agree that sidewalks are key. My feeling about sidewalks is more their importance when it comes to safety, especially for schoolchildren and getting to and from school. So I want to make sure that that's a priority, that when kids within walking distance of the elementary schools and so forth have have nice, safe sidewalks to walk on. Athletic fields, always an issue. You know, a majority of the kids in town play some sport. It seems to constantly be something that, that we're talking about. Obviously, we have some things going on at Haynes, and then we have the monastery and Zion projects that are going on. So perhaps there might be an opportunity there to, to get some additional athletic facilities. At least, that's my hope.
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan.
Yeah, safety is paramount. So obviously, I am in full agreeance with everyone here when I say that complete streets should be a priority and should be expedited, most safe in most areas that have high-traffic areas. So the youth really need a safe passage, definitely to and from school, and we need to make sure that the sidewalk plans and resurfacing of sidewalks and the construction of sidewalks are expedited. We really try to, we should really make an effort in pushing and making sure that our IDOT gets behind us on its initiatives. Traditionally, the infrastructure projects are put off and take way too long to progress. So that's the main reason why. We really should take a hard initiative and make sure this happens. We need to, we also need to find innovative ways of maintaining our existing fields and try to beef up the, the safety when it comes to our, our field maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to add, safety came up a bunch for streets that are around schools, and that's what made me feel like I wanted to join town government, because I had a friend. A friend of my son's lived on Deep Meadow, and there's absolutely no way to get there. Like, you can't ride your bike there. You can't walk there. But what I found in that pursuit is that those roads are state roads. So the big, I think the big thing that needs to be relayed generally to the public is that we may have these big town objectives, but the state is in control when it comes to those roads. So I would like to use my background to explore eminent domain options, explore matching grant options, to use Teresa Green in our office, who's already applied for a $50 million grant through the state of Rhode Island for national funds to sort of link those efforts together.
Thank you. All right, next question, Mr. Medlin begins with you. What do you believe is the best future use for the Carmelite monastery property? If you support the development of new housing there, do you believe there should be any density, income, or age restrictions?
So I have talked about this recently. I do believe that the best use of the Carmelite monastery property would be affordable housing, as well as preserving green space, because we need green space. In the town of Barrington, we have a lot of active residents, and I do believe that affordable housing will not only increase the inclusivity of Barrington, but also allow some of our more senior residents to stay. As our, everybody knows that in Barrington, our taxes are a little bit higher, and sometimes it's hard, even if your mortgage is paid off, to take care of that tax burden. So if our seniors had a place to go, then they could stay in Barrington, which is where most of them have lived the rest of their lives. And like I told the Barrington Times, I'd love to have my grandmother here, so.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Yeah, so just first off, I'd like to say that I would not have been in favor of purchasing the monastery property if I had been on the Town Council. And I really don't like the fact that the council used the promise of not tearing down the building to secure votes in order to buy the property. And now through two votes, the people of the town have spoken and said that, you know, they want to keep, keep the property, and keeping the property and making money off the property have seemed to have become mutually exclusive, which is unfortunate. So we're left with, you know, having to do our best for the town is might, what might be not, not a great position. We're probably going to end up losing money, but I certainly would like to see us have a, have a a housing project that is not, you know, I don't want to see very high density. I'd like to see something, you know, a little bit more like, you know, multi-unit townhouse and something of that nature. I'd like to see a cap on the, on the age 55 or older, and maybe also an exception for veterans and their families. And, and I think that alongside of that, I would also like to see, again, talking about some preserved open space and perhaps even an athletic facility. If we could bring all those things to, in there, you know, maybe taking a bit of a bath financially will be a little easier to swallow.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan.
The Town Council rushed the purchase without a plan. To preserve our process, I would honor the 2021 and 2022 Financial Town Meeting Citizens' Vote in Good Faith. To preserve the monastery for senior living, no demolition. Potential, we could potentially find a developer that would honor our citizens' vote. The council should not keep hiring consultants to sell demolition to the public. From the citizens' vote, the Town Council has been tasked with directives by way of their own language of persuasion, thus leaving us to find a way to make it work in good faith. Hopefully, we can add a veteran preference with senior living. Thank you.
Yes, I was a member of the Carmelite Monastery Committee that met many times with many different opinions. What I would really like to say, though, is that as a town, we don't have that much control. I think Zion is the best example. We changed our zoning pattern. We allowed, we changed it from schooling facilities to allow for a senior residential village. We also had in that plan that the building would be preserved, a belt and fort, and all those things are out the door. So the idea that the town voted to save the building, I, for me, that should have been a bifurcated motion. Purchase the land in the building, don't preserve the building together in one fell swoop. I think the town actually did the right thing by honoring that muddled decision and having this committee come forward and putting it back to a financial town meeting vote. What I would like to see happen, I think the best way to preserve the town's position is to subdivide the property into the appropriate zoning that the town decides. Your question asked if it should have an age restriction or an income restriction. I think certainly we need to find a place for those who cannot afford to live here and for those aging out. So in that capacity, absolutely, there should be restrictions, but I think the way to go about it is not preserving the building, is to subdivide the lot, preserve the green space, and make them individual units to put directly back onto the market.
Thank you. All right, next, new question, Mr. Clark. We're going to begin with you. Is there anything more the town government could or should do to support local business?
Yes, I, well, I think that for the, the local businesses, what I'd like to see is us, you know, look hard at ways to incentivize via taxes, zoning, maybe changes in some regulations to, to try and make operating a business in town easier, to make it easier to come to town and open a business. And, and I really want to make that one of my top priorities on the Town Council, if I, if I'm lucky enough to be there. I think that, I think that small business, being a small businessman, I understand that it's a driver of, of everything, and we, if we are able to get more small business in town, increase that tax base, we could take some of the burden of the taxation off the individual residents as well, which I think is a, is a noble cause.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan.
Well, I believe in incentivizing a certain tax that, that will actually help maintain small businesses and bring in new small businesses in town. There's a certain way that we can do that, but I'm fairly certain that it is definitely plausible. And I also would like to bring about business events, small business events where people get together. They get to share ideas. They get to share what they do professionally with other professionals and really kind of create a networking inside of our town and with other towns around us. So really building up that network base within, within the confines of our area geographically could build business and actually sell the area for bringing in more business. I definitely, definitely would like to start implementing some of those actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
Yes, thank you. I like both, what both of you said about incentivize zoning. I think that's really important. Currently, our neighborhood business allows multifamily residential, but our business does not. I think being able to build up on the property that's already there can be really helpful to business owners. I also think there should be credits for green building and climate mitigation efforts. So if you make an effort to safeguard your property in those ways or update with green energy, that you should be given a credit. Our town is also working on a mapping feature that allows people to search for vacant storefronts, which I also think is, is really awesome. What I see in the future is, is sort of changing the mapping of county road, parking on street, putting an extra strip of buildings, allow for more walkable space, similar to Newport. I think that would help draw in more business and more people off the bike path.
Thank you. Mr. Medlin.
I would agree with what has already been said. I really appreciate that. It seems like everybody is really, really involved. But I wanted to specifically focus on the small businesses that are currently in town. The BBCA and the Economic Development Commission, which is one of the town boards and commissions, has done a lot of work in trying to promote the businesses that are already in town, as well as bringing some of the other lesser-known small businesses together. There have been several festivals. I believe back in July, there was a street fair. We just had the Harvest Festival, which showcased a few of our small businesses. So I think that involvement in the BBCA and the EDC will help the town government support local businesses, because by having those meetings, those leaders can bring things back to the Town Council and let us know what's working and let us know what's not working. So when elected, I will absolutely ensure that there are more people who are paying attention to the EDC or are paying attention to the BBCA and making sure that our small business owners are supported.
Thank you. Right, that wraps up that question. Is there anyone else who's going to add? So I'm just going to take a brief pause and reset for the, for the candidates. Keep an eye on your wild cards down there. How many you use, how many I've left. And, and don't forget to, I know you're looking in the camera occasionally, just check as the, the women over there are waving signs around. Want to make sure you're always aware of what they're flashing. Okay, next question, Mr. Ryan begins with you. Another one of my longer ones. Between its small commercial tax base and relatively high residential tax rate, Barrington has one of the highest residential tax burdens in Rhode Island. Do Barrington taxpayers get adequate services for their taxes? In other words, is this a great place to live as well as a great place to live for the money?
This is a great place to live and a great place to live for the money, but there's always room for improvement. We can always create better avenues when it comes to our passages and our complete streets, and we have to pay attention to the ankle breakers that are all over our fields. We have to really kind of focus in on the needs of our immediate families and really cultivate those needs and kind of bring, bring up a really proactive plan to address all of them together. Also, no, it's important to note that some, some of the division that's happened recently, I'm hoping, becomes a thing of the past and that our community comes together a little better with some of the decisions that are going to be coming up, hopefully relatively soon in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Ms. Barard.
For me, yes. My children attend the public schools. I constantly walk around town, utilize the services. I have my trash picked up, and I, I think from where I grew up in New Jersey, the tax is relatively low for my size property and the services that I get. I'm proud to live in this community, and I'm grateful that my children have the opportunity to be here. I do think if we take measured steps to increase our business tax base, we can carefully about tax revenue that we get from adding business to our community, that we can offset that cost.
My answer is emphatically yes. Barrington is a great place to live, and it's also a great place to live for the money. I would agree with my colleagues that if we improve our business tax base, we could maybe offset some of the higher taxes, but from what I've seen, from what I've experienced, from what I've heard from other residents when I'm knocking at the doors, Barrington is good, and even though taxes are high, Barrington residents understand why taxes are high, and they see the fruits of their taxes every single day, whether it's sending their kids to our grade schools, whether it's utilizing some of the amenities that we have at the town hall, whether it's at the public library or some of the other green spaces. I do believe that Barrington is a great place to live, and it works for the money.
Mr. Clark. Yes, well, seeing, been here for five generations, I'd say that we think it's a good place to live. I certainly came back here with my wife after college as soon as we started having children, and I'm always proud to say I'm, I'm from Barrington. I agree with everyone. I said it earlier. I think trying to promote more business in town and increase the business tax base can help offset some of that cost. But in general, I think that, you know, let's face it, the, the engine that drives willingness to pay to live here is the schools. And while I'm not going to get into the issues that are going on with the schools, that'll be covered probably in depth in your next round of questioning. I think that, you know, walking town and talking to a lot of people, they're not, you know, they're, they're, there are people pulling their kids out of our schools. There are people homeschooling, and that's such a different feeling for me, you know, always someone proud to say I was from here. So we need to do that. All, you know, we need to, we need to be sure that our schools remain, you know, the, the gold standard, and I think that's lax. We've lost a little bit of that, so. Yeah.
That's, that's, all right, thank you. Anyone else want to add on to that?
Very tempted.
Let's make a decision. All right, we'll move to another question. Ms. Barard, we're coming back to you to start. I think this is my longest of the night, so stay tuned. Communities like Barrington have seen a dramatic shift in the demands on public safety services with significant increases in emergency calls for mental health or behavioral interventions, while traditional crime and medical responses are minimal. Some communities have responded by adding new services to their public safety teams like social workers, mental health counselors, et cetera, et cetera. Should Barrington be considering making changes to its emergency services teams, shifting from somewhat from officers with guns and badges to counselors and social workers?
So I'm tempted to say yes emphatically, because I know what it looks like personally to have a response in that way in my own family. But I don't know that it's necessarily a replacement. I think it's educating the staff that we have and adding those resources to those who already serve our community. What I was tempted to add to the last question was that beyond the schools, our town has this incredible knack of employing incredible professionals. They are well-seasoned, smart, dedicated. They are well seasoned, smart, dedicated, great stewards. And I believe that the chief, if asked this question, could probably shed more light than I. But I do think mental health response, especially in, in light of what our community has recently been through, is very important. We should always, when presented the option, increase those professionals that deal in mental health and social work, whether that's through education or adding them to those response teams.
Thank you. I would first like to commend the Barrington Police Department for the work they are already doing in the mental health space and the social workspace. They have done some training that I have already heard about and I know that their responses are already shifting because they're understanding and they're learning. And as they understand and learn, they can help keep Barrington residents and the greater Barrington community safer. Like Ms. Barrett, I also understand what it's like to have that in your family and I would really love that. I know that someone in my family is not going to be harmed because they're having a mental health crisis. And there are a lot of people who are currently just as involved because they were having a mental health crisis. And if Barrington can become one of the leaders in Rhode Island for how they respond to different, different problems in the community and they can learn whether it's an actual criminal infraction or this person's having a mental health issue and they need to have some other kind of intervention, I think that would be great. That would be great for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Yes, thank you. The, the, could you just repeat the question for me?
Yeah, I read it. So communities, communities like Barrington have seen a significant shift in demands on public safety services with increases for emergency calls for mental health and behavioral problems, while traditional crime and medical responses are minimal. Some communities have responded by adding new services to their public safety teams like social workers, mental health counselors. Should Barrington be considering making changes to its emergency services teams, shifting somewhat away from officers with guns and badges to more counselors and social workers?
Yeah, so I think I'm going to agree, relocate on the, the training aspect of this and, and look more to train up the, the existing officers, you know, when it comes to social issues and mental health issues and identifying, being able to identify that better. I have no interest in shifting resources away from the police. I think that, you know, if we can find resources to bring on, so, you know, social workers or mental health experts, that's something to talk about. If we can partner with, with outside groups that can offer some, some help in that, those areas, I would consider that. But, but I'm, I'm dead set against the idea of pulling resources away from the existing police force.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan.
I would not pull any resources away from the police force. It should not shift away for men, mental health experts. And just saying, for safety purposes, police should assess the situations first on all calls. And then from, based on the police's, the police officer's evaluation of the circumstances, then the police officer should be able to call in a mental health expert to help the situation out. So I am definitely against shifting away from resources for police officers, but we can add on mental health experts, I hope.
Thank you. All right, new question, Mr. Menel, beginning with you. How would you rate Barrington's recreational facilities? Do you support the new plan to create a multipurpose field at Haynes Park? Do you believe the town should invest in an artificial turf facility?
So I have heard folks at town hall meetings, I'm sorry, town council meetings that are held at the town hall at the middle school. And there are a lot of kids who participate in recreational activities and use our recreational facilities. And I know that there is some work to be done. I do not have enough information to rate it on a scale of one to anything, but I do know that the community, there is, there are questions about bathrooms and I know that our fields are a little bit dangerous as Jared Ryan has said. And the last thing I think that anybody in Barrington would like to do is harm, you know, our future athletes. So I believe that there is some work to be done with our facilities and I would like to do more research as far as whether we should do artificial turf or whether it should be some other, some other avenue. And I think that, you know, working with Ms. Barrett, that would be a great thing to do if I'm elected to the town council.
Yeah, I, I'm, in general, I, I support the plans for Haynes Park. You know, in my, in my experience, Haynes has always been, you know, it's had, it's had open space, but it's always had athletic fields. And I think that it should continue to have athletic fields, but they should be safe and state of the art and have all the facilities that, you know, make it a, a safe and comfortable place to use for the kids and their parents. When it comes to the, the artificial turf, I'm kind of with Braxton there. I, it, my, my immediate response from, from my history knowing about it is that it's not good. You know, it's, it causes a lot of injuries, but I think that, I think that there are new technologies out there now that, that may mitigate that. So I'd have to, I'd have to learn a little bit more about the options before I said either way.
Mr. Ryan.
Well, for artificial turf, that's, that's a, an interesting topic. But, you know, I'll have to do more research on artificial turf, turf as a whole. I believe in maintaining our fields currently with a better game plan, with a better seeding processes, with better maintenance plans. We, we can definitely have a very strong foothold on how our fields operate and to better protect our children on these fields. So just to kind of, we need to put an emphasis on being more innovative, finding better ways of exit, like taking care of our existing fields and making sure that we take and add some bathrooms. And definitely bathrooms are a major issue in this town. So we, with the facilities as whole, we really need to kind of create a focus on a more family oriented feel to every field that we have, or at least attempt to.
Um, yeah, so I think our field facilities are pretty poor. I'm out there every weekend, a few times a week with my children. My son is a nonstop play with any ball type of kid and he's only seven, so I'm sure I will be here in this position for another decade. What I see, so I don't support turf field outside. If we build an interior, inside community center with a turf field as an option when it pours rain or it's in the winter, awesome, I'm down for that. My biggest concern as I relate in the beginning is infrastructure in the face of climate change, which is a real threat in our community. So I'm a little wary of an artificial field in town, specifically if it's explored at Victory Field. I, I do think I would love to see an indoor space for our community. It's lacking, as far as where I grew up or different towns I've been to, I see, you know, we're sort of on the down, the downward trend there. But we do need to remember that our tax base affects some of that, right? We need to be willing as a community to increase those costs. I think it does come from maintenance, like Jared said. I think we need better maintenance of those fields. I was just recently in Middletown, their field is beautiful and they have a little shed and they're out there working on the baseball field and lining it appropriately and fixing divots. And, you know, we currently don't have those resources of manpower and I would like to see that change. As to Haynes Park, I do like the plan and I actually applaud the town for continuing to take neighborhood responses and making adjustments to that plan so that everyone can feel like they had a say in what's happening in their neighborhood.
All right, two more questions. Mr. Clark, starts with you. Some predict that moving forward with the school department's quote, option to be plan, thereby eliminating two of the neighborhood elementary schools will have a detrimental impact on the town and on property values. What are your views of this plan and do you believe the town council should get involved as the plan takes shape?
Thank you. I, for starters, I, I share the, the opinion of the two school committee candidates, Mr. Peck and Mr. Bell on this issue. I lack the confidence in the way this process was carried out. Now, we were coming out of what was undoubtedly been the most difficult two years in the history of Barrington School System. Repercussions of the events and decisions from the last two and a half years have only just begun to reveal themselves. The answer is not to launch a massive restructuring of the entire Barrington Elementary School System with what I feel has been minimal input from the all the stakeholders. I think that all, all options, including ones that were not introduced as part of this initial plan, must be reviewed and vetted. And we as a community may conclude that, that one of the other issues is, or one of the other proposals, excuse me, is the best for the future of our schools. But I think I, that we need to really vet other options. So I want to see a meticulous, open and the process of review, reviewing all these options. And I don't think any further step should be taken towards pursuing option to be. And I think that the town council should absolutely have a voice in that, at least when it comes to, we can control whether or not it gets funded.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
I believe this project will actually increase the taxes in town pretty exponentially over time. And that's without question. In my view on it, we need to protect our small neighborhood schools at all levels of government. There is a drastic difference between the learning environments of the grades K through three and the grades four through five. In recognizing this difference, this, the Barrington School Age Development sets itself apart from all the rest. Option to be is a willful deconstruction of a proven school system. We must preserve our proven school system for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Um, yes, so I think willful deconstruction is definitely a stretch, but I am not a fan of option to be. And I, it took me some time to come to this realization. I have endeavored to keep my personality and own personal feelings away from how I feel as the town, right? Because emotions come into play. I walk my children to school every day, to some school, and I bought my home for that reason. But it's not the loss of a so-called neighborhood school that has me sort of having a problem here. It's also not a lack of confidence in the process. This has been ongoing for two years. So while people may have not been involved throughout that period of time, I do know that there were volunteers and those elected and those within our school community that have been working towards this effort. So I, like Margaret, who's running for school committee, don't believe that the whole process, all the data should be thrown on its face. I see a more piecemealed effort here. I see our biggest problem is with capacity at primary school. I see an issue with the high school and where it lies in the flood, in the flood plain. I see an issue with its roof and unused funds for a solar project. I, I do believe our schools need updating in the infrastructure as well as some of the programs. I also agree with Jared that it would increase our taxes exponentially. So as I said, I would like to see a more piecemealed effort, maybe a portion of what was brought out into be and continued community efforts. I think the town council will get involved once it's been submitted. Thank you.
So I, in seeing some of the signs that everybody has seen driving around town, don't know an option to be, having been at town council meetings for the last couple of years, option to be is actually not on the table. It's not going to be on the ballot. And I just want to make sure that everybody who was watching this is aware of that. The town council has already decided that they're going to push this issue probably into the next year. And even then, even if the town council does get involved and decide, okay, this is what we're going to do, we as Barrington residents, and that includes anybody who's sitting on the town council, will be able to go to a financial town meeting and actually do a vote. Same way happened with the monastery, we'll be able to go and use your voice to vote on what the town should do. Personally, I believe that our children should have the best and I want our future, you know, residents who are going to live here with their kids and their families to have the best. And from what I've read and from the plans that have been made, it's going to be expensive. And so I think that a piecemeal effort like Ms. Barrett has brought up would be great. Bring in some other voices from the town, our community members, and also, you know, working with our current, the people that we've hired to advise us on our next steps forward.
Thank you. All right, last question, Mr. Ryan. We begin with you. My shortest question of the night, you should appreciate it. What issues are important to you that we have not already talked about tonight?
Oh, well, there's a wide range of issues that are important to me. For instance, the retail sale of cannabis in town. I actually oppose the retail sale of cannabis. Also, the flag policy needs to be addressed. The Memorial Day Parade needs to return to the Barrington United Veterans Council. Without question, they, they deserve to have their responsibilities and duties back and so I, I actually believe that there's many issues that need to be addressed that haven't been addressed here tonight. But inevitably, they will be addressed at some point. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for that question. That was a little bit hard to think about what I haven't already spoken about. But I think, you know, of consensus building, a collaboration, less of a divisiveness. I support veterans despite the actions of one particular person. I, I think that we need to step away from the personality in our choices and more for those forward actions. But I, I think the thing that I really want to talk about is using, advocating for a space that, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought because of course that's what happens. Advocating for a space for more affordable housing in town that thinks of utilizing homes that are already available in the middle market and deed restricting those properties instead of thinking of building new. I'm a little wary of big 40B projects in town and the lack of control over those options. So I would like to be a little more creative with thinking about our affordability options.
Thank you. Mr. Menel.
Representation is the reason why I'm sitting here in this room today. And I, that is the issue that I think needs to be talked about the most here in Barrington. There are a lot of folks who have lived here, they've lived for years, they've been here. They would say that the town is great, nothing needs to change, but here we are. And, you know, my colleague said that there are five voices who are Democrats on the town council, but those five voices are completely different people. They're all different people. And I believe that that needs to continue, can also be increased. The, the reason why I'm sitting here is because I want someone to be able to see me sitting at the town council table, see me at an event and say, hey, I think I can do that too. Because if you can't see it, you can't be it. And that's what we want for our kids. We live in a community that is dedicated to our children, whether it's through athletics, whether it's academia or whatever thing that our children are interested in. But if they're not represented in that, if they're not represented, then they can't move forward. And that goes for our seniors as well as other folks in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Yes, thanks. Yeah, I'm going to reiterate what Jared said, the issue with the flagpole. I, I don't think that the flagpoles on town property should fly any flag besides the American flag, the state flag, the town flag, the P W flag, period. The Memorial Day Parade needs to be put back in control of the veterans. It should be just, their control should go back to what it was pre-COVID. They were doing a fine job for decades. That should have never happened. Columbus Day, I, I, I don't think that canceling Columbus Day is the way that you go about creating Indigenous Peoples' Day. I don't have any problem at all with celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day, but I do have a problem with canceling Columbus Day. I think that was a mistake and I think there are a lot of people in town that would agree with that. Do I still have this? So, and then lastly, and this was really one of my big ones that I wanted to touch on, was the communication between the town council and the, and, and folks in.
You can keep going.
Okay, and, and, and the community. I think that too often, things that are happening at the town council happen to everyone's surprise and they wake up in the morning and read in the paper or some friend tells them, oh, hey, did you hear what the town council voted on? We live in a connected world. I think that we, we can create a much better system of communication. I would, even before maybe creating a role for communications director that could help facilitate that.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the question, question and answer period. We're moving to closing statements. We're going to go in the same sequence as we opened. You have a minute for your closing statement plus any unused time, which for some of you will need lots of time. Ms. Barrett, you have a minute and a half for your closing statement.
Thank you. I wanted to piggy, piggyback off of what you just said about communication. That's what I strive to bring to the town council. I think it's already there. Miss Deborah Page Trim, she has just expanded her role to work on communication. We've just updated our website to allow for easier access to get to those data points. I think we're all really busy and it's hard to consume all of this information. So part of what I wanted to share too is that I trust our boards. I was on the fence about Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day until I heard the DEI committee's emphatic response that they spent all this time debating both sides, asking the hard questions. And these are the steward. And these are, the stewards of our community came up with this solution. And to me, trusting in the process, trusting in the people that we have hired, we've elected, we have put in place is really important. That's what helps to keep a community going forward. It doesn't mean that the decisions are always right. It means that you have trust in the process and you are, feel safe to ask questions and be involved. What I hope to contribute is to stay informed, be. Planned in my, in my research, in my communication. Listen to people who have a different perspective than I do, so that I make sure that I represent all of Barrington, not just Democrats. For me, being a Democrat is about my value system. It's not necessarily about any particular decision, so I hope I have the opportunity to earn your vote in November.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Medlin, you have up to three and a half minutes.
That is a lot of time and if my mom and dad are watching, they know I'm not going to take three and a half minutes. It doesn't take that long. My name is Braxton Howard Medlin and I'm running to be one of your next Barrington Town Council members. I'm running on a platform of walkability, so I want to improve the walking options that people have here in town. I'd also like to increase representation for the voices who have gone unheard. And when I talk about representation, I'm talking about everybody in Barrington. I'm talking about our seniors. I'm talking about veterans. I'm talking about Republicans. I'm talking about Democrats. I'm talking about everybody. I want to represent everyone and I want to be your voice in the community. I also want to make sure that Barrington continues to do what Barrington has done best, which is be here for generations and generations. And we can't do that if we're not paying attention to climate change and increasing our resiliency plans. Ms. Barrett has talked about her climate change and resiliency and she's doing some good work. And I would really like to continue that resiliency work so that our boys can grow up together and maybe have a house across from Solms like she does. Thank you so much. I'm looking for your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. So in closing, I'd once again like to thank our hosts and all the candidates. As I said at the open, I care a lot for this town and I look forward to the opportunity to give a little something back. I will always listen to the concerns of the voters and try to deliver quality and cost effective services for the taxpayers. I support our schools and the kids, parents and teachers that make them great. And I support our veterans and our first responders. And I'm going to focus on making communication between the town council and the people. They represent a priority. And I know, you know, there's a feeling that we're getting there, but I, if, if it's left up to me. I'm going to do everything I can to get us even further. Because a lot of people I talk to, just, they're just not getting the message. And, and so that's, that'll be my focus. I, once again, I appreciate your time. And I hope you'll consider voting for me on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm final, Mr. Ryan, you have up to four minutes.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and thank you to the residents of the town of Barrington. Our current government has been polarized and divisive. Their decisions on matters have created pain and division among residents in our community. I have been canvassing these streets since July. And I've seen a lot of anger, sadness and hostility on the hearts and minds of our community. I have seen confusion, desperation. All their faces are in my mind and give me strength. Our public servants serve everyone in this community. Having one-sided representation has polarized our community. A true democratic republic form of government realizes that public spaces are for everyone in that community. Only in that truth can a government truly represent inclusivity. We need to ensure important services for those in need and better communicate eligibility programs. Through community partnerships, this should be taxed to a certain department for effective communication in reaching those who are eligible. Infrastructure is very important. I would definitely attempt to expedite the construction resurfacing of sidewalks in conjunction with the RIDOT. For the safety of our pedestrians. So I have a wide range of experience and practical knowledge that can benefit our town. Whenever posed with a problem, I am a pro act, I am proactive in finding a solution. I spend time researching plausible resolutions to complex problems. I break down complex issues into their finest components and create simple ways to solve them. Using common sense and my sense of family, I hope to have your vote in November. Thank you for your consideration.
Alright, thank you. Thank you all. Are we gonna close this out with any remarks?
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And thank you very much for watching. And if anybody needs to revisit. The League of Women Voters of Rhode Island website and look for candidate forums. It will be recorded and for your viewing until.